Microphone, let's see if this works. Mr. Microphone works. Good evening. This is the regular city council meeting for Monday, August 17th, 2020. Before we get started, can I just say, if I can get through this, we lost a very important person this month. Mark Slocum passed away. He worked in the IT department. He just passed away recently. And if you ever met Mark, you know, he was a, he was a good guy. He's never, you never saw him without a smile on his face. Always joking, always very jovial, always laughing at something, usually laughing at me about something. But, uh, so when we do the moment of silence, please keep him, please keep him in your prayers, if you don't mind. So we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tragic and way too young. What a good guy. Okay, let's start off with item number one, which is a public hearing presentation of fiscal year 2020-2021 budget for the general fund utilities, beach and swim centers, stormwater, hospitality tax, and events. Who's that gonna be? Charlie or?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'm pleased to present to you the annual budgets for year ending September 30th, 2021. A lot of work went into this, both by staff and council, and I appreciate all those efforts. The major functions of the budgets include public safety, parks and recreation, public works, water and sewer, sanitation, and development services. Each of these areas and across all funds, the proposed budget for the fiscal year supports council's strategic goals of investing and reinvesting in city services, customers, staff, staff facilities and infrastructure, enhancing customer relationships, and promoting a small town feel. Our goal is to maintain the city's quality and level of service, provide amenities and opportunities for citizens of all ages, and preserve our financial position while minimizing the increased financial burden on our citizens. The budget for all funds totals $18,515,911, which is an increase of 8.02% from last fiscal year. Some of the budget highlights, and then I'll dive into, dive into some numbers here, some specific budgetary numbers here momentarily. It is a balanced budget with no property tax increase. Revenue estimates are based on actual data from nine months of the current fiscal year, trend analysis from prior year, data supplied by York County regarding assessments and projections from current builders and developers. Projected net revenues of the general fund show an increase of 6.2% from the prior fiscal year. Cash and cash equivalents in the general fund for year ending 2019 is $2,788,635. Fund balance for governmental funds for year ending 2019 is $4,595,208, which brings our net position of governmental activities to $7,769,662. Dispatch services are budgeted for a full year for this coming fiscal year, and the payment to York County for dispatch services that the city's been paying since 2010 will no longer exist. While property and personal property, boats, auto, things of that nature, tax revenue continues to climb at modest rates. Building inspection and permit revenue have decreased over the past two years. We are attributing that to the unprecedented rainfalls experienced in the area and the economic impacts of COVID-19. During Q1 and most of Q2 of FY 2020, permit revenue was trending very well, and we are anticipating reaching and possibly exceeding budget projections. As we ended Q2 and moved into Q3, we saw a significant reduction in new construction, primarily due to shutdowns by the building communities as they work to find ways to operate under new guidelines from various public health agencies. We have budgeted, we have budgeted for this coming year on an average of only 10 new homes per month for the fiscal year. This number is also used in calculating, calculating stormwater revenue, based on our agreements with MI Homes and New Style Builders, which is Cameron Creek and the courtyards at Palmetto respectively. We only estimated tap fees for 100 new homes in the TICUD budget. Painting of the elevated water storage tank located just outside here, up at the Glennon Center, is scheduled to occur sometime in late Q2, early Q3 of the coming fiscal year. As we progress into Q3 of the new fiscal year, staff will be analyzing our financial position with our utility department to determine if we are in a position to move forward with a state revolving fund loan to bring, to begin implementing the needed capital improvements at the wastewater treatment plants that were identified in the professional engineering report that was done last year. These improvements will more than likely be a multi-year or phased approach. As H-Tax begins to rebound from the effects of various limitations brought on by COVID-19, we've not added any new capital improvements that would impact those funds. As we move through the fiscal year, funds begin to exceed projections. Council may decide at that time to implement cosmetic changes at Pitt Karen Park Pavilion or transfer those additional funds to the Catawba Park Fund to assist with beginning Phase 1. Specific new items included are, in general fund, are new human resource training and development programs, 2% cost of living adjustment for staff is directed by city council, replacement of two air systems at City Hall, hiring part-time park attendants to work at the River Access located on New Gray Rock Road and Windjammer Park. Attendants are projected to work each weekend beginning in May through Labor Day, including the holidays. Charging a per-vehicle parking fee on the weekends, excuse me, to use the River Access, remodel the interior of the former operations utility office for parks and recreation staff usage, installation of four new license plate reader cameras that will alert TCPCD if the vehicle is registered to someone without saying any warrants, or if the vehicle has reported, has been reported as stolen. Several capital requests identified by staff and city council in three of the funds, general fund, TICUD, stormwater, are being tabled until the end of Q2. This will give staff the opportunity to analyze revenues and make projections for the remainder of the year. At that point, those items will be discussed with city council to potentially add them to the budget. Those items include non-replacement radios for public safety, a replacement patrol vehicle for TCPCD, two new radar signs for TCPCD, a new admin vehicle for TCFD, water rescue and rickcraft for TCFD, for their water rescues, repairs to driveways at both fire stations, engineering and design work for a potential trail from Stonecrest Boulevard to Hunter's Run Trail down by the Beach and Swim Center, installation of a pedestrian bridge and boardwalk connecting Solandra and Forsythia in the Lakewood Community, live streaming of city council meetings, funding for Phase 1 of Catawba Park. Those were all general fund items. Backup power generator for wastewater treatment plant 2 in our utilities budget, along with an additional maintenance vehicle for the utility department. And then the last two items were in stormwater, an additional front-end loader and a street sweeper. While the city does continue to maintain an overall good financial position with continued increases in the tax base and increase in the millage rate or continued increases in fees, budgeting for operational needs will prove to be challenging in the future. We are anticipating this difficulty really coming to light in the next five to seven years as we get to build out. The key will be to continue to work with the Economic Development Commission and the consultant retail strategies that city council just brought on board with us to hopefully attract much-needed new commercial entities to our city, to continue to use debt funding for necessary capital expenses in order to minimize impacts to cash flows and eliminate debt where we can. Council, that is my overall budget message. Now, if I can get you to turn your attention, and council, y'all do have printed versions of these we placed out for you of the budget book. This year, we're using something a little different. It's a lot more user-friendly, very interactive. After council has completed first read and we're headed into second read of the, of the budgets, we're actually gonna put this online on the city's website. Instead of it just being your normal PDF flip-through, we do have this interactive site that, that we've been able to get put together. So your first page, Tim is actually showing this through the, through our TV channel so that folks that are playing at home can follow along. Basically, what I just read to you is the, in the introduction, that is the FY 2021 budget message, which we have up on the screen. From there, you have several dropdown items. A history of the city, demographics, which auto pulls in from the Census Bureau. Right now, it's pulling in 2018, but as 2019, or excuse me, 2020 census data becomes available, it will automatically pull those numbers in, but just showing you what, what our demographics look like, daytime population, populations by age group, your family households, married couples, how that breaks down, seniors living alone, singles, your economic analysis, looking at household incomes. We are 408% higher than the state average. Your median household income is at 142% higher. 21% is above 200,000. So a lot of good data there that's beneficial for folks. We've got a, just a brief rundown on economic development, on our different top-three tapestry segments, things of that nature. Form of government, and I'm gonna breeze through a lot of these really quickly so we can get to the numbers. Here's our form of government, where it talks about the council manager form of government. You've got our financial policy and basis for budgeting. In TGT, with our, we've got our general fund, two enterprise funds, and three special revenue funds. We prepare the budgets on a cash basis. The auditors use what is referred to as a modified accrual basis when preparing the financial statements. You've got our fund structure, where this is just gonna show you the various funds that the, that the city directly operates, obviously in the general fund with the various departments that are, that are held within there. And then very small descriptions of the beach and swim center, utility, stormwater, events, tourism, and H-Tax. Simple graph here I put together, just showing what, what is classified as our governmental activities, council court, admin, development services, public works, police, fire, and our parks. And then our business-type activities would be the utilities, stormwater, and recreation programs. You've got our budget timeline appears in here, all the way through the start of the new fiscal year on October 1st. Overall organizational chart shown here, and we've got organizational charts located throughout this thing, department by department. So this one just shows the, I guess, the, the top one overall, resident city council, myself, Katie is our assistant city manager, and then our department heads. There are no anticipated personnel, new personnel for the coming fiscal year, which are gonna work to try to maintain full staffing levels across all departments. We've got, I think, five open positions at this point, so working to try to get those filled so that we can continue on. Moving on through across the top, you've got the budget overview, the strategic plan that we just reviewed, council. Here's a PDF of the, of the spreadsheet. Residents can see that and look through that. And then this is just an overall general synopsis of what, what the strategic plan is, what those main tenets are, and then short-term priorities, short-term factors, priorities and issues, which I, which I touched on briefly in my, in the budget message. Your fund summaries, your first link is gonna show you all funds. So as you, as you slide through here, it's gonna show you your summary. You've got 2017, 18, and 19 actuals, along with 20 and 21 budgeted. Here's your revenues, and as you highlight across either a set, a data point, it's gonna show you each of those major revenue categories and what those amounts were. You can also, if you just wanna look at utility revenues, you can mouse over on utility revenues, and it's just gonna highlight that, or just highlight license fines and fees. And if that's not enough detail for you, you can actually click on the dropdown here, which council, these are printed out for you, included in the, the printed version of this that we supplied y'all last week. Here's your budgeted items. So for taxes, $6,331,331,855 is proposed tax revenues for the coming year. That's a 16% increase from the, from the current fiscal year, or $871,881. Your license fines and fees are projected at $5,023,091. It's actually a slight decrease of 1.7% or a reduction of $88,896. Your recreation revenue is $437,510, 5%, 0.5% increase, so not much of a change there. Your other revenues are coming in at 3,000. It's classified as utility revenues, but this is where your, your trash fees and things are, but they classify that just in this software as a utility revenue. That's, excuse me, I'm sorry, that are, that is your utilities revenue. You've got $5,776,766,475 in your events revenues of $159,000. Again, here's your, these are all funds. I don't wanna spend too much time in this so we can get down into our, into the actual budget detail, but here's all your, your general fund expenses through non-departmental, and then your beach and swim center expense, utilities expense, stormwater, events, tourism, hospitality tax, all in one nice spot, again, showing your 17, 18, and 19 actuals, and then your current budgeted, and then your projected budgeted through there. So that's, that shows you all funds, and as you go through, you can click on each one. So I'm gonna start with general fund, and then we'll make our way into the individual departments. General fund is the city's main operating fund, is used to account for all financial resources traditionally associated with government, except those required to be accounted for in other funds, i.e. the enterprise funds and special revenue funds. Tax revenues continue to climb at modest rates based on growth in the tax base and reassessments by York County in 2020. Business license permit fees have somewhat flatlined over the past two budget cycles, and we've, I've already discussed what, what our, what we believe is the cause of that, one being just the sheer amount of rain we've had over the last two years, plus obviously this year with COVID-19. Growth in expenditures is primarily due to increases in insurance premiums and the 2% cost of living that council's provided for, much appreciated there. As noted in previous sections, the new capital requests are being delayed until the midpoint of the fiscal year, at which time we can bring those back to council for discussion. So we are projecting a $10.83 million in revenue in 2021, which represents a 6.2% increase over the prior year. As we go through here, we do have fund balances in each one of these, and we've noted where there's some, some oddities, like in FY 2018, and that's due to bond proceeds coming in, but then not being expended out until the following fiscal year. So it's showing that 2018 is a $5.9 million fund balance, when actually, a good chunk of that is your, your bond proceeds and would've come out. And you'll see that in the 2019 police budget, where those expenses are. Again, this is, your revenues here, you've got other revenues, events revenues, recreation, license fines and fees and taxes. Your taxes at $6,331,855. Your license fines and fees at $4,39,719. Rec revenue at $437,510. They call the, the sponsorships, this software puts it into an event revenue, but the $21,000 for events revenue is actually the sponsorships that we typically show in recreation, and then your other revenues coming in as well. Let's jump into our various departments in the interest of time, and then I'll stop. So municipal court, here's your organizational chart there. Katie oversees our court program. We only have one full-time staff member in court, and that's Donna Doreto, who's our administrative judge and clerk of court. Your other three court employees, so to speak, you've got Chief Municipal Judge Justin Bice and Assistant Judge Doug Sexton, and then our solicitor, Walter Thompson, Willie Thompson. Your municipal court budget is projected at $274,322, which is a reduction of $4,041 from the current fiscal year. Most, your, the bulk of your, your court expenses are in personnel. You've got 54, almost 55% of it is personnel, and just over 45% of it is your operation and maintenance, which the O and M there is really, you're traveling for training and certifications that are required of our various judges. And again, as with the, the other sections, here's a line item breakdown of that budget, which council has received a copy of as part of their packet. Your total personnel, $150,492.44, and the remainder of your court budget coming in at $123,830, and that is the municipal court budget. I know I've talked a lot here. Mayor, I can start stopping by department, or I could go all the way through general fund and stop, whichever you prefer.
You've got some to put up with.
Or I can stop talking.
Yeah, at what point is it online?
It will be once, it's not online yet, but it will be. Yes, sir. We, we have not activated this link as of this time. We can do it prior to first read, we can do it after first read.
That's my suggestion. If we get it out for everybody to look at it, spend some time, give suggestions, concerns, comments.
Absolutely. Definitely can do that. There we go. I started on court and should've started on council, my apologies. Here's our council members, and the council budget is at $33,663, which is a reduction of $3,928 from the prior fiscal year. Biggest change here is no election that we have to actually pay for in November. There will be one, we just don't have to pay anything for it this time. Under admin, your, the budget's largely comprised of salaries and wages, office equipment and supplies, software maintenance, our annual audit expense, payroll functions, and then the new employee training and development with HR. Here's your organizational chart in, in admin, myself and Katie. Bob and Dora are also in there, along with Joseph Schillke, our communications manager, Dinah Vick, our receptionist, our IT specialist Janet Broome, and accounting specialist Dana Overlay. Admin budget is projected at $787,801. That's an increase of $23,941, or 3.04% from the prior fiscal year. As stated previously, personnel makes up almost 80% of that budget, your salaries and wages. And then it classifies the HR stuff, the new HR stuff is, is a capital, even though it's not a capital outlay, once it's assigned an actual account number, that'll get moved up into this operation and maintenance. So we'll be working on that with, with the software provider to get that done. Here's the breakdown. Your personnel makes up $625,050.78 of that budget. The remaining budget, you're looking at just over 145, 117, you're looking at about $162,750 there to round it, round it out at the $787,800. No real major changes in here. Your biggest tweak came when, after the budget workshop, when we put the 2% cost of living in. Development services, well, development services, there we go. This budget's largely comprised of salaries and wages, contracted professional services with organizations such as Catawba Cog and the City Engineer, and then departmental supplies and permit software maintenance. Again, we've got their organizational chart, just like we do on all the other departments, with Tom Goble leading that up, helped out by Susan and the various staff members there. Their total budget is projected at $574,123. That's a, showing a decrease of $11,168. Biggest change here is no, we don't have a expense on the comprehensive plan that we had the previous, the prior year. Approximately, almost 92% of their, their total budget is in personnel. And again, you can see the, just to view the breakdown, you've got $526,972.57 make up the total personnel, and then the remainder of the budget is $47,150, giving you a total of $574,122.57. Another chart we've included on here, just to show the various permits issued. So through July 30th of this year, 20 commercial permits issued, 58 residential, 378, or excuse me, 370 residential other, those are remodels, decks, things of that nature, correct, Tom? Zoning and land disturbance permits, 328 of those, total permits issued, 776. And again, that's through July 30th of this fiscal year. Going back one prior year, for the entire year, we did 1,357 total permits, 110 of those ended up as residential, 26 as commercial. So just, good graph, just to show the trends on where things are going. You know, those, these are big revenue drivers for the general fund, so just showing what those, what those are doing, because they definitely relate to, to dollars, dollars in. Your public works budget, aside from salaries and wages, this department's larger budget expenses can be attributed to the contract lawn care and lawn maintenance that's done throughout the city, departmental supplies, equipment, fuel, vehicle maintenance, landscape building and grounds and, and street maintenance are really its largest ones. Tim Gillette, our operations director, heads up that department, supported by our maintenance superintendent Chad Holland and crew foreman Jeremy Hutchison. They are two employees, two vacant positions at this point, working to try to get those filled. Total budget is $982,696. That's an increase of $61,155, or 6.22% versus the prior year. Here's your, your personnel makes up approximately 66% of the budget, of their total budget with operations and maintenance rounding that out. Your total personnel is $652,075.87, with your operation and maintenance bringing in at $330,620. No, no capital outlay projected in public works at this time, so that gives you, again, your total budget of $982,695. Any, let's see, police. In our police department, the majority of the expenses related to law enforcement include salaries and wages, fuel, vehicles, and vehicle maintenance, software maintenance, office supplies, our equipment and training, and then the boarding and lodging of prisoners. Obviously, that department is headed up by Chief of Police Steve Parker, supported by Captain Patterson and our two lieutenants, Lieutenant Parker on patrol and Lieutenant Spence over accreditation in admin. And you are almost full, one, one position, chief, right? One, one open position in that department at this time. Police department's total budget's $2959,392. That's an increase of $69,760, or 2.36% versus the prior year. We actually made a lot of reductions in there to account for some additional needed expenses. You recall earlier, I was talking about the general fund fund balance showing is inflated in 2018. Well, here's those, those dollars going out in 2019. Those, that's related to the bond expense there, that overage in that year. Let's go ahead and look at their budget breakdown. You've got $2.48 million in your personnel. In your operations, again, we do have, we did increase the software maintenance to account for the license plate readers, is why you see a jump there. Your operations and maintenance expenses at $477,729. Again, not showing any of the capital request in there at this time. So again, your total budget of $2959,392.48 in the police department. Oops, I'm sorry. Here's some calls for service. Total calls for service, obviously, you see a big drop here, but that's only through July, July 30th of 2020. They were at 2,874 calls. The prior year total at 3,986 calls. The tick marks jumped by every 200, which is why it looks like a huge drop-off here, but I can tell you that they are not receiving a drop in calls for service by any means. Tickets issued, again, this last one's a little skewed over towards the, to the far right. That's our data through July 30th, but your warning tickets issued at this point, 952 tickets, your citations at 694 tickets, and your parking tickets at 431. Your prior year on parking tickets for the entire year was 243. So we're at 431 through July 30th, as far as tickets issued. Here's some crime stats. Top line is showing your Here's some crime stats. Um, the top line is showing your, um, uh, incident reports. Just weren't tracking those in twenty seventeen, so that's why it starts in twenty eighteen. And then obviously this is through July thirtieth. But on each one, you can highlight over and see where we're at, but for the year, two hundred and four, uh, through July thirtieth, two hundred and forty-nine arrests, ninety-one accidents, uh, worked, eighty drug violations, forty, uh, B and E autos, forty DUIs, uh, shoplifting, uh, sixty-seven, seventeen domestic violence, seven burglary, uh, and again, four hundred and seventy-four incident reports through July thirtieth. So they have definitely been busy, uh, over there in the police department. Next up is the.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So on this chart, um, like, so arrest is pretty high. So if someone has a DUI or shoplifting and they're arrested, are they counted in both of those data points?
Did you understand the question?
So if one arrest has a DUI and a shoplifting is.
So it says arrest and then it also says like, like list specific, like things you could get arrested for. What, I guess are the.
Those are individuals, so that's how many claims taken into the rest.
But is DUIs included in that? So if somebody got a DUI and they got arrested, they would be in the arrest category as well. Yep.
Thank you.
Good question. Fire department, headed up by Chief Hasty. Uh, the fire department budget saw a decrease this fiscal year mainly attributable, um, to the handling of the overtime scheduling, reductions in IT and in apparatus and equipment expenses. Other major expenses in this budget include, um, the equipment, uh, vehicle, um, and equipment repair, training, uh, supplies, fuel and uniforms. Uh, again, Chief Hasty, uh, heads up the, uh, the fire department for us, supported by our operations captain, uh, Justin Daly, admin captain Warren Lewis and admin assistant, um, Kate Kopkin. Am I saying that right? Got it right. Um, and then our, uh, shift lieutenants, um, Lieutenant Dellinger, Lieutenant Blackwalder, Lieutenant Wilkins, um, full-time on, on their force. And we've got two open positions currently in the fire department. We're looking to fill. Fire department budget, um, is one billion, nine hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. That's a reduction of seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars or a four point one percent, um, percent less than, uh, the prior year. Their, um, budget breakdown, just go ahead and show that now. You've got, uh, personnel at one million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventeen cents. Your operations and maintenance at three hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. And again, not showing any capital outlay in there at this time, um, but, uh, Chief Hasty does have, uh, few items for us to discuss, um, once we, uh, get about fifty percent through the budget there. So their total budget's at one million, nine hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars, seventeen cents. And then here's some calls for service for the fire department, uh, just to show you on the screen there. Your total calls are five, um, through, I think we did this through, uh, July thirtieth, yes, are at, uh, five hundred and twenty-four. Actual fire calls at two hundred and seventy-two, medic calls at a hundred and eighty-four, vehicle accident at eleven, mutual aid, uh, given, meaning we went and provided mutual aid, uh, whether it be to Flint Hill, Fort Mill or, or, um, Riverview. Mutual aid received, that's where they came in at twenty-four. And again, as I said at the beginning, total calls, uh, five hundred and twenty-four, uh, total calls, uh, for them through this point. Chief, real quick, uh, I gotta ask the question and I forgot to get a hold of you. Um, the river rescues, are those in the medical calls? Or are those listed some, there are?
It's, it's under, uh, it's under a rescue category.
But as far as the numbers you sent me, would it be classified just in the total calls?
Yeah, it's, it's in the total calls. The, uh, we, the number of rescues that we've made was, uh, as a result of one call. We just had that million rescues as a result of one call. That twenty-two.
Okay. Cool. Thank you very much. Parks and Recreation. Major expenses this department budget, uh, include sports uniforms, uh, for participants, referees, turf maintenance on the athletic fields, recreation equipment, park maintenance and field usage fees paid to the Fort Mill School District. Joey Blethyn, our Parks and Recreation Director leads that, uh, leads up that department, uh, supported by our Recreation Superintendent Dustin Overton and our rec programmers, Walker Johnson and Andrew Rad. Um, we've got three maintenance guys in there, um, helping maintain our parks. Uh, your total budget for Parks Recreation is six hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. That's an increase of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars. Biggest increase here is the, um, park attendants, um, and the, uh, capital outlay for the, uh, prefab structure at the, uh, River Access for that park attendant, as well as remodels to the interior of the former Ops and Utility Office. And we'll show those here. Personnel makes up three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-three cents. Your operations and maintenance at two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. That outlay of, uh, eight thousand dollars, uh, again, I just discussed that. That's the, um, office and the, uh, prefab facility for the, uh, River Access attendant. Again, giving you a total budget of six hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-three cents. Here's some, uh, some charts for you as far as U-Sports go, uh, through twenty twenty. You've got baseball at one thousand, um, and two participants, flag football, seven hundred and eleven. U-Soccer at one thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine and softball at two hundred and twenty-five. And so that shows you what our U-Sports, where those trends have been going. Uh, and you can see just a slight downturn between twenty nineteen through twenty twenty. We estimate we lost out on about four hundred participants between, um, having to do restrictions this fall and then, um, our cancellations in the summer. From canceling the, our normal summer flag football program because we shifted the spring stuff, so. Our adult sports, um, you can see going through here, kickball is still by far our most popular adult sport, uh, four hundred and seventy-six per, uh, participants. Uh, men's softball at three hundred and eight and women's softball at two hundred and twenty-four. And just to give you, and then we've referred to the line up on the screen now as the COVID line. You can see that drop off, but again, the, the tick marks are every fifty, so it does look like it is a lot more, but, um, we're at four thousand, two hundred and twenty-five for twenty twenty, uh, and that's a change, uh, from four thousand, six hundred and sixteen in twenty nineteen. So, um, I think our total numbers for this fall were one thousand, three hundred and fourteen, if I recall correctly, uh, in our U-Sports. And our adult sports, uh, held fast. Um, you know, we've got eighteen kickball teams, sixteen men's softball and eight women's softball. So, um, our sport participants are, are doing strong and I think we ended up with about sixty-nine kids on the waitlist, um, when we finished things up. But now that they've done the practice grids and things like that, we literally have nowhere to stick another team, so we are full. Uh, we are full there, so. I was your Parks and Rec, uh, moving on down, let's get into non-departmental. This is where your, um, a lot of your debt's gonna show. It's three million, uh, four hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. That's an increase of seven hundred and forty-six thousand and ninety-two dollars. And that's because bond payments coming online, um, principal payments and things of that nature. Get down and show you here. There's your breakdown line by line, um, but again, your total operations and maintenance at two million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. That also includes, uh, transfer of five hundred and eighteen thousand of impact fees, uh, projected to come in for Parks and Rec over to the Catawba Park Fund. Your debt service at one million, thirty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars in general fund. And right now we're showing a contingency, if you will, of two hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars in general fund. And those will be funds that will come back to council, uh, in March if things are trending as projected or even better than projected. And go back and look at those capital, uh, capital list and see what council wants to get implemented so that staff can be ready and, and jump on top of those things. So that is your general fund budget. Um, any questions, comments on general fund at this time? None? All right. Still got Beach and Swim Center Utilities, Stormwater and everything else to go. Uh, your Beach and Swim Center is, um, our Parks and Recreation Department oversees that facility. The pool management company maintains the swimming pool when it's open and provides the lifeguards. Showing a modest budget there of a hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's a reduction of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. Biggest change there is we've moved, um, a larger portion of the, uh, salaries, uh, back over into general fund so that, um, we could try to balance that budget. Um, membership numbers are down significantly. As you can see through here, we're only budgeting a hundred and twenty, uh, projecting a hundred and twenty-five thousand. This year we have budgeted at a hundred and fifty-five, uh, three fifteen. That's based on about six hundred membership packages being sold. Next year we're only budgeting for five hundred. We're at about four sixty, four fifty-five right in there, um, through, um, so far this year. So, uh, definite, uh, definite downturn in your memberships. But you can see from the spreadsheet on the screen, um, the bulk of the revenue for that facility, and that is a special revenue fund, is, uh, in your membership, um, membership fees coming in. So, um, hopefully that's gonna rebound next year. But we'll, we'll have to continue to keep an eye on that. Again, your expenses, uh, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's showing you with a contingency, uh, operational contingency of nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. That would be a transfer back into the Beach and Swim Center savings, uh, provided, um, this budget produces as projected. But your O and M on that is one hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. And that is it for the Beach and Swim Center. Any questions, comments there? None? Oh crap, I was scared that was gonna happen. I've zoomed this in so far. Hold on one second, please. Just bear with me. Zoom this, let me adjust this. I was trying to make it larger. I'm gonna back that down so we can see everything. There we go, utilities budget. This department's headed up by Philip Jolly, our utilities director, supported by Antonio Maturo, our assistant director. And they've got one position open, correct Philip? One, one maintenance position open in that department. The department's major expenses include salaries and wages, the purchase of water from the town of Fort Mill and the transmission of sewer to the city of Rock Hill, meters and supplies, maintenance of the treatment plants, vehicle lease payments, utility billing and obviously the debt service. T-code revenues projected at five hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's an increase of five hundred and forty-nine thousand and one dollar or nine point five-two percent from the prior year. Um, you can see from the graph, um, on the screen now. Your water revenue, uh, is, uh, generating a little over forty-three percent. Sewer revenue, a little over forty-six percent, um, with your next highest being tap fees at five point eight percent, um, as your major revenue categories. Here's just the historical budget revenues over time. And again, um, we'll get this posted online, but you can see, just by highlighting over which one, what each of those categories are looking like. And here's your line up and breakdown on your revenues. But as the utility department continues to add customers to its system, the city does expect to continue to see revenues, um, at or exceeding the, uh, expense above, um, the required one point two to one debt service ratio. Currently tap fees bring in a substantial amount of revenue. As we move closer to build out, it will be important to pay attention to what our rates are to make sure that, uh, we're still able to cover that debt service. Um, this may need to be, also be looked at as po, potential smaller incremental increases. Just so it's not one big, large increase at some point in time in the future, but we'll continue to analyze that on an annual basis and, and bring that to council, um, to keep you aware. Again, here's the breakdown of your total revenues. And we've also included in here, uh, accounted for the impact fees, projected one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars in utility impact fees. Again, that's, uh, that's equivalent to getting a hundred impact fees in the utility department. Your expenses, five million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. That is, uh, an increase of five hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars or nine point four-one percent from, uh, the prior year. Right now that budget is performing very well. Um, here's the breakdown. Well, I thought it was. There we go. FY twenty-one budget, your total personnel expenses are one million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Uh, your operation and maintenance costs there are four million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars with no capital outlay. It is showing a contingency of two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars, which we discussed during the budget workshop. And we've got the backup generator and, and maintenance vehicle, um, that, um, and when we come back and, and discuss these in March, uh, that could potentially, uh, be added in here. But even with those ba, being added in, we still will be able to maintain that, um, be above that, uh, just above that debt service, uh, ratio, uh, which is what we're, we're looking to have. We don't wanna be right at one point two. Wanna have a little bit of cushion there and, uh, should be able to do that if, if things are projecting, um, as, as we've intended. Stormwater budget. Again, keeping the rate at a hundred and eight dollars, uh, per ERU, which is equivalent to three thousand, five hundred square feet of impervious surface. All residents, um, whether it's attached or detached, uh, single-family residents will pay at the hundred and eight. Commercial properties, uh, pay, um, for their total, uh, actual impervious surface as they have all along. This department has actually got two work charts, one for the, um, one for the maintenance and repair, um, and operations of the system. And then one that, um, handles the inspections on, on new stuff being installed, as well as, uh, NPDES compliance. So Tim Gillette, our operations director, and Tom Goble, uh, who also serves as our stormwater manager, partner up together and tackle, uh, tackle this stormwater stuff for the city. We are projecting revenues at five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. That's an increase of twenty-two thousand dollars or three point eight-seven percent versus the prior year. I'll need to show you that breakdown. It's pretty easy. It all comes from stormwater revenue, uh, revenue fees, which are charged on the county's tax bill. Your expenses are five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars, which is an increase of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars or three point seven-seven percent versus the prior year. It's pretty much split down the middle as far as personnel and then your operations and maintenance, um, in that department. The, uh, bulk of those salaries make up twenty, represent twenty-five percent of our public works staff salaries, um, that are doing that work. And you've also got a portion of Tom's, uh, salaries in there as well. Uh, so your total personnel budget is two hundred and eighty thousand, uh, two hundred and seven dollars and sixty-four cents. And your operations and maintenance, uh, comes in at two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. And then, uh, as I said at the beginning of this, there were two capital items, um, front-end loader and street sweeper to be considered perhaps in March. Once we, once we get along. Biggest project that we, we've got to undertake this year in stormwater is the repair of the, um, storm line that goes underneath, uh, hole number five of the pines. And we're partnering with a golf course on that. Um, it accepts flow from Callaway and Seven Co's, Tim? And Seven Co's, um, and discharges, and that pipe has gotten, uh, rotten out. So we'll be tackling that during the off-season for golf over the winter, uh, so that the interruption of play is at a minimal. So we'll, we'll be scheduling that with our golf management company. Uh, but that is probably our, that would be our largest stormwater, um, project that we've got slated for the coming, coming fiscal year. Crap, I can't get to this. There we go. Here's your events tourism. Um, this budget, uh, again, is another special revenue fund. Accounts for all of the, the events, um, that, that the city puts on, community events. Got a projected budget of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, uh, which is an increase of twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, uh, or nineteen point six percent from the prior year. The bulk of that revenue comes from the transfer from hospitality tax. Eighty-three percent of that budget comes from there. And then you've got community sponsorships and then some event fees, fall festival, uh, vendor fees from concerts, things like that that go in there as well. Your expenses, tr, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, again. Your expenses, 138,000 again. As you, as you're able to see this, uh, in 2020, you see a huge spike, um, of 1.101 million dollars, uh, in expenses. That was the transfer of the Catawba Park funds out of this budget into the Catawba Park Fund. And then the auditors will show that as an expense. So that's what that big red spike is. We didn't spend 1.1 million. We moved, moved the, what had been earmarked for Catawba Park. It had historically been in this. We've moved it into a specific Catawba Park Fund now. And so that's what that, that is showing. Here's your breakdown on your community events. You've got $60,000 in salaries and wages in there. That accounts for a portion of Joey's salary for planning and programming the events and then for the hourly wages earned from public safety, public works, maintenance staff, um, when they actually work those events. We're able to capture those here, uh, funded through H-tax. Your Fourth of July at 28,500. Fall Festival at 12,500. Still gonna do the holiday festival, we're just not gonna, because of everything else that's going on, we're just not gonna, we're gonna have to tweak how we do it, but don't envision having to spend any money there. Concerts expenses for the, uh, for the next year at 35,000, same as this year. Slight reduction in the holiday lighting, uh, down to $2,000. Um, and right now with everything else going on, we are holding off on doing any type of senior games. Uh, so your total events come up to the 78,000. Um, and that's where you got the, your total expenses at $138,000. And that is your events. And now I gotta get to, let's see. Oh crap, I've zoomed in again too far. My apologies. Let's back this out. Almost done, I promise. Let's get into the H-tax. Put this back up so folks playing along can see it. There we go. H-tax, in addition to funding community events, the majority of H-tax expenses include maintenance and repair of the TK Golf Clubhouse and Glenon Center, uh, debt payment on Rundy Park Lights, uh, marketing materials for the city, and an annual contribution to Visit York County, which was formerly York County Rock Hill Convention Visitors Bureau. Their Executive Director, Billy Dunlap, was in here previously, uh, speaking with council, I believe, at your June meeting. For those that aren't aware, H-tax, uh, is a uniform tax of 2% on the sale of prepared food and beverages inside the city. We're projecting that at the exact same amount that we projected this year, uh, at 278,000. Based on what we're looking at through this year, I think, I think we're gonna beat that, uh, unless there is a complete and other shutdown. We're about $16,000 behind off of projected revenues for this year, so not bad. Shore Club, uh, in the month of June, had their largest hospitality tax reporting year, uh, to date than they ever have, uh, in the month of June, so that's good. Nothing Bunk Cakes and Dairy Queen are our next two, so we're also apparently all getting diabetes, uh, as we continue to come out of COVID. We're loving the sweets. I can't wait to see what the Crumble Cookie Place is gonna start reporting. I understand they've had a line, uh, since they've opened, so we're glad to have them. Again, not budgeting anything crazy here in the H-tax. This is the one budget that can get, um, really weird for us with COVID shutdowns, probably more so than any of the others. But just to show you that breakdown, which does, um, you've got 115,500, which we just discussed, it gets transferred over to help do the events. $96,000 in maintenance and repairs, uh, to this place. That includes, uh, redoing flooring as it may need to be done, uh, HVAC repairs, any roof repairs, uh, things of that nature. We are showing a capital reserve or, um, leftover of, uh, of revenues exceeding expenditures of 25, 24,543. If you'll recall, in the, um, projected funding for Catawba Park, we'd envisioned using approximately 15,000 of that, uh, going towards that Phase One funding, but, uh, again, that's, that's another conversation we'll be having here in the near future. So your total operations and maintenance at 120,500, 120,543, your marketing at 9,000, your bond payment on the Rundy Park Lights at 24,617. And then this is your Visit York County, um, at 8,340, which is 3%, which is what they had requested, again, balancing that budget at 278,000. That is all of the departments. The last thing I'll show, and I won't spend a whole lot of time on it, uh, the last tab on here is debt. Folks will have the ability to look at our government-wide debt, um, and just to see what that breakdown looks like. They can see those amounts, um, and what, where, where those funds are going by fund. They can also look at it by type. So as we start talking about various, uh, bonds and this, that, and the other thing, you can see where our debt is. You've got a 2020 revenue bond, which council just redid or just, uh, approved for, it's not that long ago, um, saving us about $32,000, um, a year. That replaced the 2014 and the 2018 bond. Some people want to know, well, what's the, what's the 2018 bond? Well, that was the Water Tower bond for the new Water Tower at Windhaven. We were able to, uh, refund that one, reissue it on this 2020 and get a lower interest rate.
To be clear, council did not do that. Charlie and staff did that, so thank you.
Yes, sir. But this, this page has got a listing of every single one of the bonds, uh, dating all the way back to the referendum bond, uh, that was taken out to purchase the golf course and build the Glenon Center, all the way up through the 2020 bond. And again, folks have the option of clicking that dropdown to show you what those payments have been, um, what those changes are on an annual basis. And Mayor, at this point, I've talked for about an hour, so I'm sure you are quite, quite ready for me to be done.
First hour was his, second hour was ours.
Hey Charlie, can I ask you?
That concludes my, uh, my budget presentation. I'll be happy to answer, um, any questions that council.
Council, do you have any questions?
I have one quick question. Um, you and I had talked about potentially adding in the end date for each bond. You did? Or is it just not in this printout?
Uh, it's, it's, let me, it may not show up in the way it prints out.
Okay.
Uh, just because this is meant to be a digital book, but yeah, um, when you look at the narrative under the debt by type.
Okay.
Uh, the final payment for the, you'll see it on the narrative, you should see it.
Yep, okay. I got it. Thank you.
And we, we put that on each one of them.
Thank you.
So you know when, uh, what year they expire.
Any other questions or comments? So we, when we all met for the first time as a council three years ago, we've been at the library and we discussed what kind of goals we had for the city. And then I guess we had a comp plan meeting in here a year or two ago and listened to everybody what their goals were for the city. And I believe it was, um, small-town field, public safety, and parks and recreation. Right, it was the top three things. And people keep emailing me and talk to me all the time, when is the park gonna get built? When is the park gonna get built? So it's, it's hard to tell somebody, we're gonna build a, a soccer field when the police station was in such state of disrepair, because public safety, I think, is, is too important to live, to be safe in your own house, to, so that the fire department can get there in three to four minutes versus seven or eight minutes. It only sounds like four or five minutes, but that's a big difference in a life or, or property. So, so we, we think we need more ball fields, more parks and recreation, no doubt about it, but like I said, it's hard to say, uh, we can't stop all the sewage going into the lake because we got a new soccer field. So we just gotta have priorities. And we're not raising taxes because you guys would go berserk if we raised taxes, right? So you could only got so much money. And we've gotta say, here's what we've got. And every year, both chiefs can spend whatever we have left over, believe me, there's always something new for law enforcement, there's always something new for fire, for the parks, uh, the parks people need more lights or new fields or utility wants a new backhoe or a front loader. There's always something that'll take the money away if we don't start focusing on the parks. So I think I told both chiefs, look, we made you guys whole. We made you, we got the, two of the best departments there that I think money can buy, and we, we've done really well on that. But it's time to do some parks. We get it. And so we're gonna work on that next. We thought this was the year we were gonna break ground on Catawba Park, and then COVID hit. And it's hard to make plans and we don't know what, what kind of money we got coming in. I think we even kicked around, I don't know if it was Alicia talked about it, decrease in taxes. That kinda was, do we do that? Of course, that would screw the whole budget up. So this is just a time of uncertainty now, so we've just gotta kinda lay back and, and buckle up. Like Charlie said, we're not hiring any more people, we're just kinda, we're just trying to make it on what we got. And maybe next year, we'll, uh, we can break ground, or we still might be able to break ground this year. Depends on how much money we got coming in.
I think 2021. I think, uh, based on the funding scenario, uh, that I, that I sent to council previously, which, Mayor, if you, if you want, we can make that part of your, uh, your September regular meeting, um, to give everybody a big update and kinda show what that looks like, uh, that financial plan for, for Phase One, based on the schedule provided from the engineers. I think realistically, we've got a very good shot of being able to break ground by, uh, summer of 2021.
That would be wonderful. So we hear you talking about parks, because we've been saying it for three, four years. We're gonna get you some parks, but something always comes up, like the Water Tower. That's not much money in comparison, but when, when, when Windhaven gets built, they got these people that go in these houses, they want their shower to work on the first day. We can't say, you don't get to take a shower five more months because we just built this brand-new soccer field. So that's not how it works. So we gotta look ahead on what, where we spend our money now. So we're there. We'll get there. Is there any more questions before I turn it over to public comments? Okay, let's do some public comments. Looks like Liz Duda wants to come up here and speak to us about, oh, the budget. My favorite subject.
Thanks, I'm gonna try it with this on, and if you can't understand me, then I'll take it off.
You can take your mask off if you, we can't hear you. It is a muffled kinda noise.
I tried. Thank you. So Liz Duda, 1081 Palmyra Drive, um, and I want to say thank you for the budget. You clearly put a lot of work into it, so this is very impressive. I also like the tool that you just went through, that was, that was, um, very interesting, so, um, that was useful. And then I enjoyed, uh, I appreciate that you have the meetings on YouTube, so I was able to sit through your two-and-a-half-hour budget meeting, so I appreciated the discussion to learn about this. I specifically would like to talk about the $15 River Access Fee. I'm concerned about it being steep. So you guys may know that I feel strongly about public access and free public access. You may know that I've spoken to the school district, asked them to, um, support open community use so that we could all use the schoolyards. I also encourage you to think about whether the fee should be so steep at, at the River Access. So $15 seems high, can you, can you go with no fee? So I want to tell you, I, we've lived here for about 15 years, we've spent a lot of time at that, at that, at the dam, at the, at that area. So when my kids were little, if someone had karate, we would go, I would take one of my kids and we'd run out and we'd hike up there. So it was just, we would stop by, we'd take a quick hike, it was a really nice public access place. We've, we've floated it, and so I know that it's changed. So I know that right now, what you're proposing is that this fee is on the weekends, in the summertime, and that it's, I, I think there's probably two components to it. One is revenue generation, and the other one is probably to deter people from going there. I don't know, have you, have you looked at whether the, the, the fee for enforcing it, so the parking tickets that you're getting, it, can you compare that revenue to what you would get from, from this fee? So have you made that comparison? If you, if you want to do a fee, can you do a lower fee? Could you do $5 instead of 15? I am aware Ebenezer does $10 to $15. I think there's a lot, they, they offer a lot there. This, um, so, um, here, it's for parking, could you consider instead maybe doing a fee for the professional tubers? I don't know if you do that, if you're already looking at that, but instead of a parking fee, um, I'm thinking of, it's, so, I'm thinking of the people that I've seen there when I've been there. There's a lot of fishermen, uh, I, I see a good amount of fishermen and their families there, and they're, they're fishing and they're taking stuff home for their dinner. I, so I think it's people of various income levels. So I don't know that everyone who uses that park has, has the same disposable income to be able to use the park, um, if, if you charge the $15 fee. You mentioned, um, in the beginning, you mentioned amenities and opportunities for people of all ages. I'll say also for, of all income levels is something we care about. You talked about the small-town field, fields, the small-town field, the small-town feel, and parks and recreation. So I think a $15 fee, that's taking away from the small-town feel. Um, and it's, and we care about the parks, so we want to give people public access to the parks and free, if possible, free public access to the parks. And we have very limited public access in our area, so please consider not charging the $15 fee there, and, and if you have to charge a fee, keep it up though.
All right. Thanks, Liz. I, I don't believe this is a revenue generator, is it? We're not gonna make any money off it. We gotta pay for the parking lots and the...
It, it helps, it definitely helps.
Offset the cost.
It funds the, the cost of the park attendance.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, at some point, it will help offset the call, the investment that we're about to make, um, this fall with additional parking for down there. Uh, it will definitely help offset that. Now whether this is an ongoing, you know, for everything, obviously, it's part of the fee schedule that council would, would consider every year. Our calculations to cover the cost of the park attendance, um, was, was based on the, uh, projected on the $15 per carload, um, but it's, council's feed us up, so we just need to know what you want that fee to be, uh, and we'll adjust accordingly, uh, part of our first read.
Have you been down there on the weekend to see the parking problem we got down there? It's amazing. It's unbelievable. So I, I, I hope we're not doing it to deter people from using it. I, I really, we want everybody to use it, but with every place else closed, TK's the only thing that's open. I mean, Windjammer Park on the weekends, it's crazy.
Yes.
And I think when Ebenezer Park opens and maybe Carowinds opens and other places open, maybe it'll, it'll die down a little bit. But right now, it's, it's a definitely a hazard out there. I don't know how you can get any emergency vehicles through there if there was an ambulance needed or anything, so.
And we were specifically only doing it on Saturdays and Sundays, mainly to try to avoid the, the fishermen. Um, I don't know that we get a whole lot of fishermen down there in the chaos of Saturdays and Sundays with, with the tubers and paddlers. Uh, so we were only gonna keep it to Saturdays, Sundays, and those holidays, Memorial Day, July, uh, July 4th, and, and Labor Day. Um, and then we would, then it's just free access the rest of the time. So, uh, it's during those, those heavy-use months where we need a parking attendant down there, we've had an incredible amount of issues this year. Um, it helps supplement what PD's trying to do. Chief, I think you, you've got at least two people that are constantly down there every Saturday, every Sunday, if we've got a full-time park attendant or a combination of part-timers down there that can assist, uh, to where PD can stick more towards those more law enforcement things and then get called as needed versus, hey, there's, you know, you can't travel down New Gray Rock Road anymore because there's 50 cars that have turned it into a parking lot. So it's, it's really to try to help through that. Uh, it'll also add some revenues towards, um, I think we're picking up, um, what was it, 160 or 100 spaces, Joey? New spaces? 100 new spaces that we should be able to break ground on with Duke Energy in late September of this year, uh, going through the FERC approval process there. So hopefully when we get those people off the road, um, we can use these ones to help continue to pay for bigger and better amenities, uh, restroom facilities, things like that down at that area.
At the budget meeting, you talked about potentially increasing the parking, um, penalty to $200 from $100, so you, that, that is a way to raise revenues.
That's just for the decals. It's not just parking, parking illegal on the street. That one's just for the parking decal violations.
Oh, I didn't think so. It was just a violation.
Yeah.
We were keeping the decals at 100, right? And the parking tickets were going to 200?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, the decal, the decals are gonna stay the same, but I'm talking about the violation for not having the decals.
Right, okay.
Was gonna go up.
Right.
Correct.
And then I also would point out, people work during the week, so it could, it would exclude the people who have to work during the week.
Good point.
So couldn't get there to fish during.
Yes, ma'am.
But we're definitely not trying to discourage any from using it. I think we're just at a weirdly, weird time right now that people don't have anyplace else to go. And when things start opening up, they'll get, they'll find something else to do. We have very nice parks and we have very nice stuff, and people who don't live in TK like to use them. In fact, I've told this story a couple times, a lady who lives on Windjammer called me the, well, a month ago, two months ago, and told us that we, we made Windjammer Park too nice and that people were using it now. And that's why it's so, that's why it's overrun with people. And I said, guilty as charged. Yes, we made it too nice. I'm sorry. But, but that was free money, so we like doing that. Anytime we get free money, we'll take it.
Yes.
That it? Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Okay, next is public comments. This is just all general public comments. The first one is Jackie wants to talk, oh, Windjammer. We just talked about Windjammer, okay.
Imagine that.
And I just sent you an email, so.
Did you?
Did you?
When you get home, you can read all about it. Chief sent me an email, and I sent it to you.
Thank you. Well, my name is Jackie Travieso, and I own 29031 Windjammer Drive, which is located at the corner of Windjammer and Snapper Point. In the past six years, I've had six different vehicles overshoot the curve and drive through my property, one stopping just yards from my front door, as evident by the skid marks in the lawn. On July 19th, a vehicle traveling from the park left the road and plowed into and displaced four 150- to 200-pound landscape boulders, was airborne, and came to a rest, came to rest the front end at Snapper Point, which is a bus stop location. It was a favorable trajectory and luck that the car did not strike any of the four oak trees, but only missed them by about 15 inches. In the fall, I called 911 because of a truck speeding from the direction of the park, nearly ran me over at my corner. If it weren't for the squealing tires, I may not have had enough notice to jump from the road into the bushes to avoid being struck. I've contacted Chief Parker, thank you, about the high speed and the reckless traffic on Windjammer. He and his officers have increased their presence, posted a temporary mobile radar sign, and have been monitoring vehicles with their handheld radar guns, and for that, the residents are extremely appreciative. I've circulated a survey to garner observations and experiences of my neighbors both on Windjammer and adjoining cross streets. 61 residents responded, and it's important to state that 80% have experienced near misses while walking, running, or biking on Windjammer. 93 witnessed non-commercial vehicles presumed to be residents or guests exceeding posted speeds. They've also indicated commercial vehicles along with city vehicles and delivery trucks are observed speeding as well. 70% have commonly observed excessive speeds during weekends, excuse me, weekdays between 4:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m., followed by weekends at any time, with the majority, about 80%, of the perceived offenders being teens and young adults. 60% have reported incidents of concern to either Chief Parker, officers on the street, or this city council. So collectively, I know that you're all aware of perhaps some of the incidents. The comments submitted on that survey cited as additional evidence that we have a speeding problem on Windjammer, and the highlights are numerous close calls, nearby, nearly T-boned, incredibly unsafe, side-swiped, cars passing on no passing lanes, mailbox-struck, too dangerous to walk, stepping or jumping out of the way of speeders. And while I'm grateful to have the opportunity to address you this council tonight, and that Chief Parker immediately took action, we have a problem that isn't going to be solved with temporary flashing signs. They're effective in the moment in that they draw attention, but it's without consequence because they are seen from a distance before it registers speed. More frequently, more frequent officer-held radar, which would be much more effective, with tickets given over verbal warnings. Sidewalks, while a dedicated place for pedestrians to walk, do not stop the speeding vehicles and reckless driving, nor do they provide protection for bicyclists who share the road. And today, I come to you with information, and I leave you to determine the solutions and ask for collaboration. I'm asking you to decide to take more formal action and support more in-person radar monitoring and issuing tickets. We've come to a point where drivers need to be held accountable before someone is injured or dies due to negligence. Please give Windjammer the same reputation TOK Drive has, in that if you are speeding, you will be ticketed, and residents tell their visitors to slow down and observe the speed limits. So I have the survey here with me tonight. I can share that with you.
Please do.
And I'm happy to email it so that it's much more easily read.
So I just emailed you today. You can email me that survey if it's in a digital form, and I'd love to look at it. But your recommendation would be to have more radar police.
And actual ticketing.
Okay.
Because we've gotten to the point where yesterday I observed teenagers driving up from the park where they, the passengers were literally hanging out the windows with the only part of their body in the car or their knees. So somebody's going to die, and I don't want that to happen.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Obviously, we've heard a lot about Windjammer this year because it's like the only place in town to go to in many cases, so it's been a little crazy down there, but I think Chief's on top of it.
I thank you so much.
But if we can tweak it a little bit more, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, we need to do a lot more.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next is Mr. Carl Schaefer, who wants to talk about shadow box fences on corner lots.
Hi, Carl Schaefer, 7769 Fairways Drive. I came to you all last meeting and brought it to your attention, and then followed up with some email, and I was able to go to the Planning Commission where Councilwoman Dash was there in attendance, and I think I heard some good things coming from there, so I just want to make sure that that stays on your all's radar and help us keep TOK beautiful and open. And as those new measures start to come out from the Planning Commission, I'd like to be apprised of what's going on, and I hope that you all consider those things as they come out.
Thank you. Is that coming to us next, City Councilman?
September, right?
September, okay. So we'll, we look forward to seeing you September.
Appreciate it.
Awesome. Thanks, Carl.
Anybody else didn't get to sign up in time? Want to get up and speak about something? Nope? Okay, let's move on to the approval minutes. Council, you have the July 13th. You've seen the July 30th and the July 13th. Are there any additions, changes? Anything you want, anything to change? Seeing none, hearing none, the minutes stand as published. Next, we'll have committee reports, item four, with Economic Development Commission.
All right. We've met formally once in July and then informally on a webex, but in the first meeting, they discussed our partnership with retail strategies in terms of how to engage them and our direction for them as it relates to trying to attract commercial development, as Charlie mentioned, in the budget, which is so important for us. Also have discussed the food hall concept, specifically a group in Greenville called Gather Greenville that's near their downtown. It's a website. It's very easy to find because it's called GatherGreenville.com. But the food hall concept, if we could find the proper location, either in an undeveloped area of TOK or an area that is suitable for annexation. This particular gravel, Gather Greenville, and another one that we looked at as well, they're all local businesses. They're not chains. It's a small, doesn't take a huge amount of money to start up, and it gives local people a chance to get their fit in the door. Also talked about possible permanent location for food trucks. So those are all discussed, and that crumble cookie was getting ready to open, and as Charlie said, it has opened to very long lines. It seemed like every night when I come home, there's a box sitting on the island. And there were also a couple of other intriguing new projects that were looked at. We also did a webex with some other volunteers from some of the other committees. Heather was on that call with us. People have been attending not only the various committees and commissions we have in TOK, but also going to other municipalities, Fort Mill, and looking at some of what they've got going on. The point would be that a little bit of synergy and all of us be rowing in the same direction because it all's going to benefit the city. So if we're all rowing in the same direction, certainly it'll be a lot more helpful. So that was it.
Well, I like the food truck idea. I got an email the other day that Whataburger has a food truck now. Did you see that? Now, that's not in this area. Ryan and I grew up on Whataburger, so a lot of people here probably don't know what Whataburger's are, but man, are they good. I had a number four on Sunday. Number four, I love them. I almost drove down to Jacksonville just to get a cheeseburger one day. Okay, let's go to the Planning Commission. Alicia?
All right. So our Planning Commission members have restarted attending the different Planning Commission meetings throughout the county. So that's restarted since COVID impacted the meeting attendance at those. And the Planning Committee, our Planning Commission is also participating in those committee meetings with Economic Development and TOK Forever as well. Our meeting, we discussed quite significantly for a while, the fencing issues regarding, that Mr. Schaefer had pointed out to us before regarding the shadow box fencing and the creation of a wall. Lots of conversation happened around there, just trying to really think through what our strategy is, what the tactical solutions are, and making sure that whatever we do come up with is going to work for all sorts of different scenarios. So big kudos to the Planning Commission for really going in, diving deep, and having a good conversation about that. And then the other main topic was the animal control ordinance that we're looking at regarding chickens and other fowl. So that one, I'm sorry. Do you say something?
I said pigs, right?
Oh, yeah.
You're talking about pigs, too?
There was some conversation about pigs as well. They're wanting to better define pet, and that's one thing that they're looking at. They're looking at the York County ordinance and ensuring that we are going to recommend something that's in compliance with that, or we might directly, like, quote to the York County Animal Ordinance. Okay. So they are planning on bringing both of these items back to City Council in September, so anticipate those coming. If you want more information on either of those, please feel free to reach out to me or Susan. She does take minutes at those meetings, and so if you're interested in just exactly everything that was discussed, you'll be able to access that. They also briefly reviewed their work plan and updated some of the plans for that based on the impacts of COVID. And we reviewed an annual update on analysis of housing products available in the city. And one thing that they're planning on doing is starting to track age-restricted housing since we are now seeing an increase in that type of housing in our city. So our next meeting will be Monday, September 14th. We rescheduled that meeting due to the Labor Day holiday, so I encourage you all to come up to that meeting right here at 6:30.
All right. Any questions from either of the committee members? All right, let's move on to item five, new business.
We have consideration of memorandum agreement for the detention of juveniles with the Department of Juvenile Justice. This annual agreement provides for security detention services with the South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice Detention Center for July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2021. We do this every year. Are there any questions or concerns? Hearing none, this is pretty straightforward. I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion approve the memorandum of agreement for the detention of juveniles with the Department of Juvenile Justice and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
I have a motion, Marichard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Gus Machinas. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous.
Item 5B, which is a consideration of encroachment agreement for TMS 643-07-01-050, which is 970 Nob Creek Lane. The property owners at...
Close the tape, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that better? I'm sorry. The property owners at 970 Nob Creek Lane in Callaway, back up to the out-of-bounds area of hole number seven of the pines. The builder of the house installed landscape boulders partially on the property and partially on the city's property, which was Newland's property at the time of the boulders were installed. They are requesting that encroachment agreement in order to allow them to install a fence behind these boulders. The area between the property and the fairway is wooded and therefore would not be visible from the golf course. Is that better? Are there any questions? Do you want to go into a little detail about that? I mean, it's pretty, pretty easy to, pretty self-explanatory.
So it's like others y'all have considered recently, just an encroachment. City still owns the property.
Right. It's just a couple of feet.
And so that they can legally put that fence, that rear fence back through there, and you can see it both on the exhibit. I don't know, it's probably hard to make out, but it's just a little small hatched portion up at the top of the screen there. And I believe, hold on one second, I'll tell you, I think it's like .04 acres or something like that. It's very, very small.
So we're not giving them the land, they're just allowing them to build on our...
That's correct. It's giving them legal permission to put that fence there is basically what you're doing.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody want to make a motion?
Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the encroachment agreement for TMS number 643-07-01-050, 970 Nob Creek Lane, and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement.
I have a motion for Alicia Dash. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Heather. So time to vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. 5C, which is a consideration of a letter of credit and the performance, labor, and material surety agreement for Trinity Phase III. At the Monday, August 3 meeting, the Planning Commission approved the final plat for Trinity at TOK Phase III contingent upon approval of the letters of credit and performance, labor, and material surety agreement. Staff has received a letter from the project engineer certifying certain improvements have been installed, and his letter includes an opinion of probable cost to complete the required infrastructure. The infrastructure to be secured in the final lift of asphalt on the roadway, sidewalks, and landscaping. The requirement, the required improvements are to be bonded by a letter of credit from Truist Bank in the amount of $65,167,050. Are there any questions? All right, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to approve the letter of credit and performance, labor, and material surety agreement for Trinity Phase III contingent upon approval of substance informed by the city attorney.
I have a motion by Ryan. Do I have a second?
Second.
From who was that?
Me.
Alicia, Heather?
Heather.
Heather Overman?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Please signify, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. Okay, let me catch up to, what are we on? 5D.
Bid award.
What's that?
Bid award.
Yeah, I got a 5D. Here it is. Bid award for 2020 Sea Fund Road Surfacing Projects. Each year's SCDOT using tax, using gas tax dollars, provides each county in the state with dollars to resurface the roads. York County divides the money amongst each district. The projects that were awarded by York County and TOK for 2020 are Blackhawk Lane and a portion of Wood Home Court. The city has publicly advertised the bids on the city's website, the newspaper, and the South Carolina Business Opportunities website, as required by the South Carolina Department of Transportation. We've received seven bids from qualified contractors, and the low bidder, as certified by engineers, was Blythe Construction in the amount of $121,396. Are there any questions? Hearing none, this is going to be an easy night. How about a motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, motion to award the 2020 Sea Fund Road Resurfacing Projects to Blythe Construction in the amount of $121,396, and direct the city manager to issue said bid award and execute all necessary paperwork related to this project.
I have a motion from Heather Overman. Do I have a second? From Alicia?
She's quick.
That is quick. She's fast tonight. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Four in a row unanimous, and that's the day. That's it. So we go to item six, city manager's report. Charlie Fundenberg.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll be real brief. Spoke enough tonight. As I mentioned earlier during the budget presentation, our fall sports registration has wrapped up, and activities are actually beginning this week. We've got a total of 1,314 kids signed up for youth sports and 38 adult teams, so looking forward to seeing everybody out there being active here pretty soon. Going to be a little tight at the beginning, but the school district is letting us get on to TOK Elementary starting, I believe, September 1, so that'll help give you a little more elbow room, especially around Turner and Rundy. Unfortunately, we did have to cancel the concert on Saturday due to weather. Looks like from some of the email responses, we are going to go ahead and do the September 5 Labor Day show. We won't start closing down Windjammer Park until 3:30 that day, and that's when we'll set up the traffic checkpoint. Show will be from 4:30 to 7:30, weather permitting, and we will be live streaming it so that everybody can dial in and do watch parties and things of that nature. everybody can dial in and do watch parties and things of that nature.
Do we have any signs that go there that says the park is closing at whatever time it is, or?
I could talk to Joey and see if we can get some generated, or at least get some stuff at least put up around the pavilion, letting folks know.
At the entrance into the pavilion or something, just so they know that, don't make a day out of it, it's going to be closing it. What do we decide, 3:30?
Yes, we'll start that process of notifying it. And then last, but certainly not least, lots of well wishes, thoughts, and prayers to all the teachers and students that head back August 31st, even those that are doing the virtual. It's a new school year, it always starts off with promise and exciting times, and wish everyone the best for a great, great year. And that concludes my report for this evening, sir.
All right, let's start off with Alicia, you have any council comments?
I do. I first want to start off with business and just say, Charlie, I am so happy that what this budget book looks like.
Good.
And I can't be more proud of you guys for compiling it and providing five years' worth of data with three, three actual and two budget. So I am very grateful for you guys taking the time and putting this together, because it means a lot, and I think it just provides us with so much more information that can help us make better decisions. So I really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you for the charts and the graphs, those are great. Good job, thank you. And then, secondly, I just want to say, I'm going to miss Mark. My sincere condolences to their family, and it's a big hit, and I know city staff is suffering too, and just know that y'all are in my thoughts and prayers, and just wanted to say that, so, thanks, that's it.
Heather, you have anything?
Yep, mine's going to sound very similar. Great job putting this together. I think it's going to be helpful for the entire community, not just us, to be able to see that, to have that transparency, and to be able to go and look those things up right away. We get a lot of questions throughout the year, and now I can just be like, on this page of the budget manual. So that's really helpful. So great work putting that together, and to all the department heads as well for their work on the budget. Condolences to Mark, his entire family, and to the rest of the staff that worked directly with him. This is, we will definitely miss him, and we're very sad with the circumstances, so sending best wishes to his family. And then last, but not least, hope everybody has a great school year, gearing up for our virtual classroom at home. Should be awesome, and that's it.
Ryan, you have anything?
No, I have nothing, Charlie talked enough for both of us.
That's unusual.
I don't have much either. Charlie, thanks to you and staff and all your department heads, that was a heck of a job on the budget, a lot of hard work, and we appreciate what you did. I, you know, today when I was looking over things, and I looked at the org chart, and I saw IT manager and nothing under IT manager, it just really made me sad. I just continued thoughts and prayers for Mark and his family. And I would also say, you know, happy back-to-school time, whatever form of back-to-school that your kids or grandkids are going, it is an exciting time, so make the best of it.